So I think we'll make a start because it's going to be a really, a really busy hour. We've got lots to cover. It always goes way too fast and we want to make sure we really highlight some of the great features that decisions offers. So wonderful, right? So yeah, just a brief introduction, really my name is David Hall, Managing Director of Cloudy IT, also joined by my colleague Steve Walker, who's Head of Local Government Services, and also one of the people responsible for decisions and deployments and the support, and also a councillor chairman himself. So he really understands your meetings, how they work, and has had some real great success working with our clerks around the deployment of decisions. We've got Mia and Johan as well from decisions and they're joining us from Norway. So thank you guys for joining in, we really appreciate it. You know, we really believe that decisions is an incredible product. We've seen some great success and they're going to be on hand to answer any questions that you might have at the end. So great, so just a bit of an overview of what we're going to cover today. We really want it to be not too much just talking and salesy, but just really about the product. So we're going to contribute most of the time around full demonstration of decisions end to end. So we're going to really just talk briefly about what decisions is, the key aspects of it as well, the mobile phone app, the device app that's available, and then we'll do some Q and As as well. So really a very light agenda today, but focused on the key products and services. So we were recent at the MIA conference, the SLCC conference, and it was a real great experience. We had a lovely time, Mia came over from Norway and we had all our other partners from our labs and we were basically had all the technology in a room for our clerks and officers to play with. And it was a real great experience. One of the offers we had available from the Management Action Conference was that we were offering if any council signed up to decisions from Cloudy before the first of September, they would get some free support as well, worth up to £850. So we're still, we're actually going to offer this for this decision hour today as well. So any council that's on this session that thinks this could be for them will run a quote and if you agree to go ahead before the first of September, then you'll be entitled to a discount. So it was a great conference, we thoroughly enjoyed ourselves, loads of wonderful conversations. And I was just speaking to the organisers actually, SLCC, and they said that it was some real good feedback as well, so really excited about that. So we've got our guest speaker Francesca from, well LGRC, but Fran, you work with lots of councils in your role at LGRC and you've been using decisions for a little while now and it's really nice to get the feedback of a clerk from using decisions. So Fran, can you hear me, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, you're coming through loud and clear. Steve, do you want a spotlight Fran, is that okay? I can't, I can't because I'm showing my screen, but if you could give her a spotlight, that'd be fantastic. There we go. Oh, no, that's not Fran. Bear with us, technical issues. There we go, yeah, thanks. And spotlight Caroline, sorry Caroline. Brilliant, there we go Fran, great to see. So Fran, yeah, well, you know, we've worked together for quite a few years now and it's great to work with a sort of clerk who's always, you know, dealing with different situations at different councils and, you know, hear about, about what you're doing and why decisions is working for you really.
Yeah, I think, I think it's quite unique when you, when you do go around the country to various different setups, because every council is a little bit different, but we all do pretty much the same, if you're supposed to be. So it's really nice to be able to, to try this, well, to try, use decisions in lots of different places. And I bought it personally in advance because I thought, do you know what, I might not be able to get all the councillors on board or get councils to agree to this. So I thought what I'll do is I'll invest in this myself personally, and then when I go travelling around the country, I will, I'll use decisions and I'll try and convince councils that it's a good idea. So, and as I hand over to the new clerks, I generally show them my decisions set up and they're quite keen to continue that.
Yeah, and that's what we do love about decisions, we, you know, we show clerks who've been doing this for years, you know, and we know it's the bread and butter task that they have to do. And there's obviously a number of different pain points that people have, whether it's accessibility or the tasks and actualists and general administration behind it. But we generally get good feedback, which is exciting. Where are you at the moment at of interest Fran, what council are you at?
I'm in Lewis, in, I see, I'm always hesitant because I could be anywhere, I don't know any given day, but I'm currently in Lewis in East Sussex.
Excellent. And, and I suppose that's a great thing with, with the decisions part, it is, it is flexible. So, you know, you don't have to roll out to the whole council, you, you can just use it as someone who's building the agenda to distribute it and then, you know, you know, giving you that PDF and the benefits, you know?
Absolutely, and I use it, so I use it in the office, with the officers here in Lewis. And so we generate, because we're quite officer, well, we're trying to be quite officer-led here in Lewis, and it's a really useful tool for that. And it's a useful tool for collaborating with, with the other officers, because they can just add things to the agenda or to make suggestions to the agenda. And they can see as you're building the agenda. I've got a Buildings and Amenities Committee next week, so my agenda's going out today for that. And officers for the first time have been looking, seeing what's on the agenda, seeing where the reports are required, and then they can upload their reports to those items on the agenda, which is great.
That's, that's a great example of collaboration there, isn't it? And, you know, we were at the MIA conference last week and one of our clerks, you know, ran into the experienced room and was like, oh, I managed to collaborate and solve a problem, you know, just through Teams from my laptop at the conference of one of my colleagues back at the office, you know, and you're in different buildings, but it's all done over Microsoft and it fits together nicely. So yeah, glad to see that, that working. You know, what advice would you give to, to clerks who are looking at sort of a different system about, you know, what you've done and what you've gone through about how, how it can benefit them?
Well, as I say, I mean, I, I was convinced, so convinced I wanted it for myself. So as I travel around the country and if I come across a council that hadn't got it, I was thinking, no, I need, I need decisions here. So that's why, why I've got it for myself. But I would definitely say, if you're, you know, if you've been there a while, if you know the systems, if you know how the council's working, it would be utterly crazy not to have it, almost, mostly because it just, it takes all the, all the effort out of doing it and you can plan things in advance. So absolutely go, go for it. And it, it just makes life so easy, rather than pulling up a template every month of the meet, of last month's meeting and copy and paste and copy and paste and all that stuff. You don't need to do any of that because you're just creating little building blocks for all of your meetings and just picking them off a shelf every month. So you always need your apologies, you always need your declarations of interest, you always need this, that and the other, and they're just there, you just pick them off the shelf, use them and it's so easy.
Yeah, saving time, yeah, exactly, which is really important. So well, Fran, thank you so much. You know, if you're okay to stay towards the end, if anyone's got any questions, that'd be really, really great. And hopefully some of the stuff will show you, will, will show, will resonate with people when they see it. So brilliant Fran, well thank you ever so much. I will push through the demonstration and we'll catch up soon, so cheers. Great, Steve, if you want to un-spotlight Fran, that'd be fantastic and I'll move on. So, so very briefly, kind of just to summarise what decisions does. So decisions is an end-to-end piece of software built on Microsoft 365 that allows you to create meetings very quickly, whether they're formal council meetings, committee meetings, or just departmental meetings. If you're a company or a council and you've got a meeting for your department, you can attach an agenda very quickly and efficiently. So it allows you to create meetings very easily. It also allows you to prepare for those meetings by adding all the supporting documentation very swiftly. It's all done under the cloud and it allows you just to really fast track. And when building that agenda pack, you know, merging all those supporting papers, it's really useful because it's like, almost like doing a mail merge. You press a button and it puts them all together. And we've worked really hard with companies like Aubergine who've done the web accessibility recommendations with Mail to make sure the documentation is as accessible as possible, which is really key. So once again, saving you a bit of time there. So it also allows you to obviously just run your meeting and do all the follow-ups and create your notes. One of the things we really love about decisions is it helps councils with their adoption of Microsoft 365. So, you know, if you're a bit unsure about how to use OneNote or Planner or Tasks, because decisions is built on 365, it uses all of these apps and Steve will show you this in a moment. And it will, you know, really help fast track your adoption of all this great technology because it builds into your sort of working, working day-to-day life. And when you combine it with maybe one of our learning platforms that we provide here at Cloudy, we can support you and your staff with lots of video content about how to use these apps in even further detail as well. So it allows you to create, prepare, meet and then finally manage. So after a meeting, you can create the minutes very swiftly and we have a running joke, but you can have those, you know, minutes to those councillors after the meeting before they've even got home. And it fully integrates into Planner and Excel and allows you to really just be as optimal as possible, which is what it's all about really, you know, we're trying to save time and time is money. And if you can do more with, with less, then why not? So, so decisions end-to-end does all these wonderful things. I've got a councillor tablet here, which I'm going to do a short demonstration of during the presentation as well, because that's what's great about decisions. It's not just useful for the clerk and the officers, but it's also useful for the councillors because they can use a personal mobile phone and install the decisions app, or they can use a council-issued device like this and they can have access to all of their agendas at a touch of a button. It's really quite a nice interface that decisions have put together and we'll demonstrate that a bit later on. So there's a short, high-level overview of decisions and what it does, but I think the most important thing is seeing it in action, actually. So I think we're at the stage now where, Steve, you're going to basically cover all the key steps of decisions and how it works. And I suppose one thing I haven't mentioned is we've also brought a lovely feature around pushing your agendas and your minutes to your website as well. So maybe we'll touch on that, Steve, as well. But yeah, Steve, I suppose over to you please.
Right, thank you David and good morning. So from a clerk or democratic services officers perspective, your meeting will start out in something probably like Outlook. So what we tend to see as we can, on the screen, we're in Outlook now and everyone can see that, I trust they can see that's up on the screen and, and visible to everybody. Fantastic. So in here, in Vana Calendar, we can see for today, there is a full town council meeting. I have the location of where the meeting is, I have everybody who is invited. So it's exactly the same as your current meeting. So if you're using an existing system where you're inviting those councillors via email and maybe attaching the agenda as a PDF and those, all those additional documents as a PDF, that first stage of this process doesn't change. So we can see here, if I go into Teams, this is our, how we lay teams out for those clients or those councils that have decisions with us. We have a democratic services team where everybody, officers and councillors all belong to. We have a private admin channel where the clerk or other officers reside. And then we have every committee, including full council. So these are all laid out in the same way, they have the standard additional items. So we have the decisions, meetings tab, we have any tasks, in this example, the finance committee has, and we have a calendar just for that channel. So we've all probably looked at calendars and there are meetings everywhere and, and sometimes you occasionally, it's a bit too noisy. What we do is add the channel, channel calendar in and that will only show you meetings for that committee. So if you are a councillor and you have, you're a member of a lot of committees, the main calendar can look quite full, but if you're only interested in up-and-coming planning meetings, you can go in the same way and just see those meetings. So for today's example, we're going to do a full council meeting and we can see here in my channel calendar, I have my full council meeting. It looks exactly the same as yours, I have everybody invited, where the location of the meeting is. So all of this, as we were saying, is exactly the same. So what do we want to do with decisions? We want to add an agenda to that meeting. So you'll see I've got the D here on my bar in Teams, I can click on my D. This will show me all future meetings that are coming up and, or past meetings. So I could see what has happened previously and I can see what's up and coming. So we can see here today between eleven and one, we have a full town council meeting, the clerk has created this and I can see all those who are invited to that meeting. Now, many of you will start off probably with an agenda from a previous meeting where you've taken a lot of the work items out and you're left with the statutory parts to that. Or you may copy an agenda from a previous meeting and adjust it to suit. So decisions works really, really well in, in this respect. As we can see, I can choose to create one from scratch or I can create one from a template. So clicking create agenda will offer me several options now. I can start typing away, so I can put welcome and so forth, but that's quite a lot of work to be doing. So I can choose to select a template. And again, the advantages here, I can use one from a previous meeting. So I could have, all of my meetings have all had one, I could choose one from that. I could choose ones that just relate to this particular team. I could have some personal templates. So I may have, if I'm, if I work in maybe HR and I have a standard disciplinary meeting that I have to go through with employees, I could save that and have that personally put away. Or we could have some meetings that are available across the setup that we do. And I can go and look at those, so I can think, is this the meeting what I want to use? I quite like that one, or I might want to use this one here. So again, I can choose which one I want, or I can use the one from the previous meeting. So I have several choices. So here I'm going to use my typical town council full agenda. And what this will have on it is very familiar to all of the clerks present, the statutory items. So we've, we've got everything on here that I would need to do it. What we can do here, I think we could go with that and, and there are no work items. I've got my reports from my district and county, I have minutes from the previous meeting, the chair's report, the town clerk's. So I've got everything in that I need, but I might want to add some additional items into this. So I want to put in, we've had several reports come in. So for this demonstration, I'm going to put the reports pack at the bottom. So I'll save this item and here we see, now this is one of the really, really good bits. You can put into decisions any standard Word document, it could be Word, Excel, a PDF, anything like that can be imported. And it's literally a question of dragging and dropping. So I can put them all in here. So for this demonstration, I'm going to put them all into a line at the bottom on my agenda. And once I'm happy I have on there, let's get everything on there. I've got a few items on there now, that's fantastic. As we can see, it is literally dragging and dropping them onto the form and letting go. So again, it's quite intuitive and, and easy to work with. So I've got all these documents in now there, we're all ready, I've got my items in here. What I can again add into this is the ability to tag a particular person in it. So my example here, we'll have David Davis is the chair of this, we can come down. In my district and county council, I could have them as all William and Becky. I can tag all of these people in. So this helps while the agenda is running to see who is speaking. You may have several people who, guests have turned up to speak, you've added them into the meeting, you can highlight them in the agenda so they are able to see where they are speaking. So again, we'll go in and we'll add a couple of councillors into here. So this allows you to put your structure of that meeting together. So I'm quite happy now that I have on here everything I need to do and I now want to send this out to my councillors. So I'm going to create that meeting book. So this is the bit where you're going to put everything together. On our small menu up here, I have the option to create a meeting book. So agenda pack or meeting book, depending on your, your language that you use, this allows you to put this, all these documents and this agenda together in a format. As David said earlier on, it makes great use of all of the programmes that you get with 365, so Word, Excel, Planner, they're all used, there's no additional items you need to get or anything that you're not familiar with working. The templates, we do, we work really, really closely with decisions to get these a really good match to what you're using now and to ensure that they work automatically with your meeting. So what we do, we have our decisions button, it tells me everything on the agenda, it shows me all of my items and I'm going to put this together now into my document. So this can have your logo, it has all the details of the meeting laid out here. Let me scroll back up to the top, we can see it's filled it all in for us from what you had either in Outlook or Teams. So when you create that meeting, it uses that to put this together and it's very customisable. We've had many councils that have varying layouts and there's a couple of changes coming to it again as well, we've had requested, we've fed back to decisions to have a look at. We've got our summary sheets or our front, and again, as we were tagging those varying councillors in earlier on, their names have appeared under their section. And then we come into the main agenda. Again, as David said earlier on, we've worked closely with Aubergine and decisions to make this as accessible as possible, so that everything works really nicely for assisted screen readers and it's print and font and layout is, is as, as accessible as we can get to. So we've got all of our items in here, what we'll do next is all of those reports that we put into the agenda, we'll put in down at the bottom in one document. And this is again, where decisions is really, really clever. We haven't had to come out of decisions to do this, it has for us made our meeting book, our agenda pack. And we can see it's put all of our reports down the bottom. So I can come down and look, I'll zoom that out a little bit so everyone can see, there we go. I can come down and I can navigate using here, I can come along to the cloud, to planning and it works me all the way down. For any items I've added in as my reports, at the end, they are all attached here. There's a couple of ways of doing this, they can be done so they are linked to the agenda item. So you can click on the agenda item and see the corresponding report, or in my example here, you could have them all at the bottom of the agenda. Again, we can adjust this to suit how you prefer to work. And again, we've, we've fed this back to one of our colleagues at decisions, Gabriella, who was with us at MIA, to look at the possibility of having this as a, an option that you can select when you're doing it, which would be absolutely wonderful. So here's all our reports, so this is our PDF, it's all made, we're really, really happy with that. Decisions now says, right, these are all the people you've invited to your meeting. Okay, that's fantastic. And I can put, see, this month's agenda and what that will do for me is email all of those people. So that is done, you've probably heard a ding there in the background. And if I go to my, where are we? On here, I should come out of Word and then in here, in my inbox, there we have the meeting book has been. So the clerk has sent that round to everybody, see this month's agenda and reports, I can click on that. So those of you that have councillors that have devices, or those of you that have councillors that have council issued devices or their own laptop or tablet, they would receive it like this and they would be able to go in and have a look at that agenda there, the moment that that is available to them. So we're quite happy, we've got everything ready. As you say, it's ready to share with participants, it's in draft mode, I've checked, there's no glaringly obvious spelling mistakes there, everything is absolutely fine. I will now publish that. And I can choose to send this to people now, or decisions will say, how do you want to let everybody know? Well, I don't need them to be suggesting anything, I'm quite happy with everything in there. I can put it into the Teams channel and I can send an email. So I could choose what I, I want to do to notify, to ensure that all councillors receive it in time. You've probably heard a little ding there and there we have an update for the full town council meeting, that there is an agenda available for it now. So this will take us to the meeting part. So I do believe David's got a tablet ready, a councillor device ready, so he's going to show that in meeting part of this. So David should be a member in this meeting.
Well, give it a go, yeah, thanks Steve. So it was a great demonstration of the first stage there. Right, so I've got a councillor device here. So this is a iPad, it's a £300 iPad, so nothing too expensive. We paired it with a lovely Logitech keyboard and case, it's got a nice little stylus here as well, which works. And to be honest, actually, we found out with these iPads, you can use a pen with a rubber end as well. So you don't need to buy fancy stuff. So I'm going to share my screen off the iPad there and then I'm going to show you what it looks like from a councillor's perspective. So here we go, I've got to think and talk at the same time, bear with me, there's my Teams app gone. Oh, is that thing, oh, there we go. So if I share this screen now. There we go, so this is my screen from my iPad. Right, so I received from the clerk the, the agenda. So here we go, Steve sent me the full council agenda, here's the email, I've got multiple dings. I then go and click on view agenda and it takes me into the decisions app. Okay, so if I go back, I can actually see, you know, councillor Mark Davis, we've got loads of different meetings that I'm part of, but if I go to the full council meeting here that Steve just put together, I can see here the, the agenda. So I've got, at the top, I've got the meeting but the agenda pack, which I'll show you a bit later on. Equally, as I go down, I can see all the agenda items, I can click on it and, and view that as well, so that's quite nice. And then at the bottom, we've got actually the reports pack, which will show all the documentation, which is good. And I can actually open up a document and it will just take me to that document. There we go, so nice and simple. And you could have multiple Word documents, Excel files, it works in most, most, most formats. So that's pretty good. So some interesting things to talk about here, I suppose. First off is to, during a meeting, you can actually make as a councillor annotated notes. So I've just opened up the documents, this is the first time I've done it, so there we go, just turn on the pen. And I can, I can pinch and view, view it through here, but I can actually use the, let's move this in the top corner there. I can use the annotation here, I could choose, I don't know, saying, let's choose a different colour maybe, there we go, let that to thickness is zero and then I could. Oh, there, so that's, that's pretty useful, that's quite a nice feature, we can scribble some words there. So a real nice example of technology working well, you also have the ability to just type notes in as well, so put there. There we go, and these are all private notes as well, no one else can see these. And then for sort of more in-depth information, you can put that little bubble there, press it here and put something a lot longer if you wish, and then you can get to it really quickly. And you could even share that note with someone else, which is quite nice. So if I hit share, I can then share it with other councillors or the clerk or anything else, like a private note, so that's a, a nice feature. So, so that is a bit of sort of what a councillor might do on, on the agenda. Now, let's pretend for, for a power councillor who's quite, kind of reads the agenda and wants to have, you know, considerable notes, you can go here and let's say, I don't know, district councillors' report, I can go to my notes and at the moment I have no notes because I haven't written any. But if I click on create, it now opens up OneNote and it, this is the first time I've done it, so it just needs to sync the agenda to OneNote, so it's going to take a few seconds to do that. But once it's done, you'll see in a second how I can create all my notes and basically have a single place for them. So let's just press okay and here we go, sync, sync, sync. So here it is here, here's the full council meeting and here's all the different items. So here is the district and county council report, this is of interest. There we go, so I'm just going to just, there we go. So I've written my notes and you can obviously go through, write whatever notes you want to put personally, all the different agenda items, which is quite. All the different agenda items, which is quite nice. So we've done it here under the district and county council. Now all I can do is press the button twice, go into the decisions app. It takes a few seconds. Ah, there is that. Bit of interest alone. So you can be in your meeting and you can see your notes, which is really quite nice. And then I've really, another nice feature which I quite like about this is being able to see multiple documents at the same time. So if I click on the three dots here and I go to split view, I could then open up, I don't know, let's say another app. What can I do? One note. I'll just do one note. And you can see the two side by side, which is really nice. Okay. And you can even make that bigger or make that bigger. And this is quite cool actually, because as you can see from, you know, I can see myself. So you could be in a meeting on your device remotely, viewing the agenda and seeing people speak at the same time. So I think we are pretty much covering every single angle here as well. So really, really nice way to do it. I just want to close it off. There we are. So that was a very quick example of some of the features from the councillor's perspective. Now, you know, we know there's lots of pitfalls when you, when you work with councillors to move them to this sort of platform. It's not simple. Here at Cloudy, let me stop sharing my screen actually one sec. Yeah. So here at Cloudy, we've put a lot of effort into helping the onboarding of councillors. So they, they feel as supportive as possible. So we do in-person training on the tablet, on decisions, and we really help them with the onboarding of it. And we've had some really good feedback actually because the system is so intuitive and easy to use. Equally, if the councillors aren't ready for it, not a problem, because when you use decisions, you can also just send them a PDF. And that's pretty much how they always, you know, receive their agenda. So you can roll it out in stages. You can, you know, get all the benefits yourself, as Fran was mentioning, save some time. Send it to them as a PDF. They open it. Or they can use the app as I've just shown you to get all that functionality as well. So that's, that's my section there, Steve. I suppose you're going to sort of show what it's like to take the minutes and distribute them afterwards.
That's, yeah, that's right, David. Thank you very much. So I'll go back to sharing. So here we are back in our meeting as David has shown you. So I will spotlight myself. I hope everyone can see what I'm sharing on the screen. David, yes.
What I would say, Steve, is you're making the screen from my end look a bit small. So maybe unspot your, un spotlight yourself just because we can't see the screen as well. Just a bit better.
Can everyone see the screen? Is that fine for everybody?
That's better now. Yeah.
So we're going into our meeting now and as David's currently shown, councillors have access to everything. But this is the clerk or council secretary or democratic officers time now to take the minutes. Decisions has some sort of wonderful sort of tricks up its sleeve here. And as we can see, I've preloaded some of the minutes for this meeting. Because again, anyone who has been to a council meeting, I probably guess 80% of the minute lines, you're going to already know what they will probably say. So I've taken the opportunity whilst the councillors are going through the agenda today before we've come out and I've preloaded them. So I can click on my notes here and this will open up the minutes for this meeting. So most of you will probably either use something like Notepad, Word, maybe actually handwritten notes and then put them into a minute document later. So decisions adds some automation to this. As we can see, all of the previous meetings that have minutes are listed and all of the items in this agenda are shown to me. So it's got a bit of structure to it. The structure is wonderful. Shows me who's going to the meeting, where it is and when it is. So I can make sure I'm minoting the right one. And what I was saying earlier on about canned responses, I know the chairman will welcome everyone to the meeting, remind members of the public about turning your fans, and I know members will be reminded of a couple of standing orders. Maybe the chairman will remind people about shuffling their seats or drinking or whatever. There's lots of things you know that you could have as a canned minute. So you can get them in. Same with apologies. Apologies were received from or there were no apologies received. It will be one of two options. So I already know that there were no apologies received. Again, this was something we spoke about with Gabriella from decisions was having the ability where we have these notes that have gone yellow, as we can see, having on a menu a quick add so that as you come to apologies, it would either be there were no apologies received or apologies were received from and you could use their status, whether they're absent or not, to put in the apologies. So again, to, to speed that process up. Same with declarations. They were either declarations or they weren't. So again, I can take out what is relevant. Same with the public. There were no members of the public or there were members of the public present. Again, I could do a lot of this ahead of the meeting because I'm aware of what would be going on. So again, the district and council report, the report was noted. And I could put in the minutes were accepted as a true. And again, this is on your however you true. I can't spell it true today, but whatever reason, I'll put them in. Now I am highlighting these in bold and yellow purely to show you when we go to do the minutes, what they look like. So again, if there was, you know, no reports here, I could put no report received. And I could work my way through the agenda adding these in where I needed to. So I've got all these. I've gone all the way through down to the last item. I could confirm the next meeting day was confirmed. So was do that, get that in and I'll highlight that again, just so that we can see it. So what this has done is saved all of those minute lines where I've added a minute line. So if you don't add a minute line, you know, under government matters, you might put you know, there were no matters or however, you can choose this and it works no differently to how you are currently taking your minutes. Going back now into decisions, lots of yellows have appeared. So it's told me it's remembered what I have done and I wanted to, and we've come to the end of the meeting, we've come to the last item on here where we've done the date of the meeting and we're going to do the minutes. Again, it's really, really easy. We click the minutes button. This will open up Microsoft Word that everybody I trust is very familiar with. One of the things that you will need in decisions is Office 365. That is a requirement of it to get it up and running. So in here, I've now got again, a standard template for a minute that we're using here at Cloudy Council. I'm adding in the description of the agenda item and I'm adding in my notes. And I'm also going to say that in our example, Lisa, Rachel and William weren't present. And I press our magic merge button. Again, it's filled in all of the items up here. So I can, you know, and again, because it's in Word, this is again, one of the really, really useful bits. If there's a couple of bits that you need to fix up, you can do that in this Word document. So we can see here, I've got everything in all the way down. And here it's telling me that was confirmed is really poor. English should have been, has been confirmed. So I've got everything on here that I need and I'm happy with that minute document. Now depending on your process, you may have the chair may look at this before it goes to councillors or you may send it to councillors in advance of the next meeting. You've got a couple of steps depending on how you do it. So I can do it for review. So I could say that David Davis is the chair. I can send it to with a note. Please check that these are okay and that there are no obvious errors. Or I can skip that and move straight to sending off a PDF. And David said this at the beginning of the meeting. If you've got all of your notes in OneNote and you've got your system set up like we have here in the demonstration, I could then now have that minute document with those councillors from there. And if I go to my email, there are those minutes and you've heard a couple of dings there with them. So and, and you know, that is, that is as fast as you could possibly do it using this system. And again, you've got flexibility. You've got that initial Word document where you can fix it up. This would be your, your unapproved minutes for the next meeting. And again, one of the other bits that we've now gained inside of decisions, it's locked the meeting. So we've gone end to end. We started with nothing. We've got our agenda. We've run our meeting. We've done our minutes. And it is now locked that meeting ready for next month. So that's running end to end inside here. One of the other bits that's really, really useful, I think as clerks, we most have an action list or a task list depending on how you do it. What decisions can do is track tasks or actions assigned from items within the agenda. So in my example here, what I'm going to do, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to go back in time slightly and I'll unlock this meeting. And as we work down, work our way down, it's possible to add them in. So there's a task option here. We can see on my screen and I could say in the public mention weeds in the high street. So I could say weeds outside shops are back. And I want to assign this to councillor Mark Smith, who is our grounds team liaison. I found out when I wanted one. And I can set a follow-up date, which is reasonable. Something by Monday, the end of the month, I want to know. And I can put that task in. So that's done that for me now for that section. I can also come down and say, planning and highways matters. And I can add a task in, note new 30 mile per hour signs. Spel signs and to review locations. There we go. I put that in there. I'm assigning that again. I could assign that to the district councillor and maybe the clerk want to see that. Again, I want the follow-up by the end of the month and I've added that in. So what we've got now, we've got a couple of tasks that we've added in. We can see their numbers. Those actions are on here. If I go to my task list now, they are available to review. And again, this task list is live. So again, if you're using 365, a lot of documents you can work on in real time, this document would, you could attach live to your agenda in your reports at the end and say, this is the clerk's action list. Can everyone tell me where they are? And if I was on my way and, and I'd done something, I could update that in real time. So which is really, really a good way of working. The other thing that's really, really exciting about it is it joins itself up. So if I look at this and I say there's weeds in the high street and note new 30 mile, I can go down this and think this update on this new, these 30 mile hour signs, where does that come from? It will then take me into Microsoft Planner and it will show me who's responsible for this. Maybe there are some details, some documents that relate to it here. And the other bit, this, this 360 view, I'm sure many of you have heard mentioned. I can click on that and it will take me to the item in the agenda where that was discussed. So I can go backwards and forwards. I can say, right, okay, that's where that comes from. I can come out of there and back in planner. I can say it's in progress now and I've started it today. All of this is, is live. So all of this information, as we can see, each time we have a meeting, anything that is put in as an action or a task is stored in there and in, I shall refresh this very quickly.
Steve, I was going to ask you to do, could you do a comment as well to councillor Davis for me, just to show you how the comments work from a collaborative point? I'm conscious of time as well.
I know, I know.
It's fine. We've still got 15 minutes, but I think there's that one there.
So we've got comments as well. So what this is, it uses again, it's underlying structure of Microsoft Teams to, so I want to say something to Mark. Please see item four, five, is this okay? And what that will do is send that in Teams tagging councillor Mark Davis into this conversation. So if you are making use of Teams in your council and you've got a couple of items that have come up on the agenda and you know that someone may have some information about them, you could send a message inside decisions. So again, we haven't come out of decisions to that person. Say, look, I'm putting the agenda together. Have I got all the reports or the information or could add some updated photographs? You can do all of those conversations inside the system without having to come out. So and they're stacked up all the way along. And again, like a lot of modern applications, we can turn them on and off. One day I was going to say then, we were talking about tasks and actions in the minutes. So I'm going to cheat slightly and remove that document and reopen the Word version of the minutes. So where we were earlier on, I could put on my meetings day. I may have to go back a step actually to do this. Those tasks have appeared in here and I can choose to insert those tasks into my document. So where we have got our one here for the public participation session, I can come down to the public participation session and I can insert that task in there. And again, for the highways one. So again, you know, someone said, oh, what do we do about that? I can come down to the relevant section in the agenda and I can insert that in there. We can then go back to what we were doing previously with that document. I can put in my draft watermark. I can create the PDF again. One of the really, really useful parts of decisions is that it keeps all the documents the same. So I don't need to resend this. So anyone who has the link to that minutes will open it and they will now find these tasks have been added into it. So if I forgot to put them on or they were missing and they've been highlighted, they can go in now and we can see who is responsible for them. So that's sort of decisions end to end from the beginning of the meeting, starting off in the calendar, right up to the minutes and the subsequent action list being produced. So.
Steve, could you just show the web presence very briefly? And I think we'll just go to Q and A. That's okay.
I was going to say, yeah, as David said, I was just about to go. You want to get this up on your web. So you've got a couple of ways of doing this depending on your setup. What we've produced is a, a package that works within Microsoft Teams that allows you to view all of your meetings, councillor information and committee information. So again, it's something that you can manage in here. You can see who are members. We can look at councillors and look at all of their information on here. So again, it's something that you may capture somewhere separate. I can go to my meetings that I've got on here. So I can look at full council. This will then go and look at any full council meetings. I can bring them over to here. I can see who attended and who didn't attend and mark them accordingly. And I can look at the agenda, update the minute record. And what I can then do, depending on how your website currently works, so this is our Cloudy Council example, it's embedded into our website this way. Now you may prefer a calendar view or a list view. And what you're able to do is click on that meeting. We can see the agenda items. We can see who was present, who we received apologies from. And here we can see that there is a minute and a gender PDF. We can see our committees are listed here. We can see our councillors are listed here. So we could go and look at them. And this can be embedded into most current websites. It could be put into there or it could be run standalone. We can top and tail it to make it look like yours. And this is, like I say, a really, really useful tool. It lays it all out quite nicely for you. You don't have to do a lot. It's a couple of buttons and it is published from within here. And I think that's probably a good point to put it back to you, David.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. Right. Let me just share my screen. Bear with me. Here we go. So yeah, very briefly, we covered obviously the, the app from decisions that can be used on tablet, mobile phone as well. And we'll just really talk about some of the pricing with it. We talked about web presence as well, which is a great app, we think, for assisting you with the sort of uploading of agendas and minutes. assisting you with the sort of uploading of agendas and minutes. And then yeah, pricing. So we've worked really closely with clerks and listened to what would work for them and Decisions. And we, we've come up with a couple of different packages here to suit all size councils. So working closely with Fran, actually, we came up with the clerk's package, which we thought was a great, great, great solution for small councils or locums to, to use, who don't want to roll out to full council but want to dip their toe in and get the ball rolling. Equally, we've then got the small, medium and large package, which includes everything you've just seen as well, from, you know, your templates to other features as well. So you can request a thirty day free trial. As I've mentioned as well, we're offering a, a, a deal as well if you sign up and, and, and purchase the solution from Cloudy for the, the first of September. Then we will give you free support as well and assistance with the onboarding as well. So those are the packages there. Mia, is there anything you want to add about the packages we've put together with yourselves?
No, not necessarily, I don't have anything to add, but it's a, it's a good starting point and it's possible also to start with the clerk's passage, package and just test it out as David said, and then move up when you're ready, roll it out to the councillors and move up to the other packages.
Brilliant, thanks ever so much. So that's it, we're, we're ahead of time actually, which is great news. I was really conscious of finishing and without rushing the end bit there, but has anyone got any questions for Fran or for Steve, Mia or Johan at all? So I will stop sharing my screen and if anyone's got any questions, we'd love to hear them. Yeah, Laurie, you've got a question there, please?
Yeah, the minute numbers, do they automatically transfer into the next corresponding minute on the next meeting or do you have to start them off?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. You've got a choice, you've got some flexibility so that you can have them carry on from your existing minute format, you can have them run consecutively, they can be supixed, prefixed, there's lots of flexibility in how you do it. But yes, they, they will, and one of the great things in, in Decisions is the agenda item will follow the minute number. So if you're at minute one hundred and nine for argument's sake in, in your planning committee minute numbers, the agenda items would follow that on as well. So if you moved from your current system to Decisions and the next meeting was a hundred and ten, Decisions would start on from a hundred and ten.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, Laura. Any other questions at all, please?
I think David's, David.
Yeah, I can see, yeah. So David, you're not coming on your hour today, so maybe.
No, we're, we're bolted in our offices, David.
Absolutely, absolutely. But yeah, great, thanks David for joining us and obviously you're at MIA as well, so good to see you again. Yeah, any questions from you, yourself at all?
Just, just saw one, obviously because we've got various committees and we have a numbering system that corresponds from the agendas to the minutes. So like we say, full council, that is FC, we have the year, so two thousand and three forward slash starts off at one in January and could be on goodness knows what by December. Likewise, we have committees, so we have FEC for finance executive committee and so, so forth. Now, we can obviously adapt or manipulate whatever you want to call it, modify the, the, the decisions set up then to, to reflect those for the various different committees, et cetera. Yes?
Yes, Johan is nodding there. Yeah, there are many custom ways of representing the agenda and minute number based on how your council operates. And, and you know, if you, if you need assistance with this, Johan or other members of, of the team are on hand and we set this up during the onboarding. If you had something that's particularly interesting, again, Decisions would have a look at it and then set that up ready for you. And each committee can have, as you've mentioned there, independent numbering schemes. So you're not just tied as one is always, as I say, full council can be FC, finance can be F, planning can be P. It's all possible and they can all have different styles. Some can be meeting one to ten, you know, one can be continuous. You can choose this on a per committee basis. So again, really, really flexible.
Okay, and finally, just this final question then with page numbering. So I can see that on the screen, so apologies. But with the minutes, obviously it could be consecutively numbered on the, in the footer, that obviously applies and that, that works.
Yeah, so, yeah, page numbering is, is, it's a, it's a word feature effectively that does the page numbering. Decisions has a couple of bits in there and they follow what, so each, so each minute sheet would have its own page number on it effectively.
Brilliant, that's great, thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Brilliant. Well, if there's any more questions, please do say now. We've got obviously, you know, Fran and the team here. And what I would mention is, you know, Decisions are incredibly responsive, we all are to any requests we, we see come through. We're really keen to adapt this for the sector and see some success for the clerks using it. And what we do love about, because it's cloud first, it's an innovative product, the, the features that are coming out regularly are just incredible. So as you would expect, AI is playing a big role in this in the future and there's I know some stuff in the background that, that could be coming out soon to really assist you with the, the, all the different aspects of building and running your meetings. So really excited to watch that space. Here at Cloudy, we have a Decisions Excellence Group that meet quarterly as well. If you can't make the meeting, not a problem, we will record it, send it out. But it's just a session with Mia, Johan, Steve and we just throw it around and hear the best practice that clerks have had, things that do and don't work and we share that about as well. So that's another thing to invite you along. I don't know when the next session is, Steve. But I think it's, what, September time or something like that, isn't it?
I'm just going to say to David who asked a question about the numbering, Johan has kindly put in the meeting chat, the screen where that is configured, showing some of the examples that are available to you there. Johan, thank you very much for that screenshot.
Brilliant. And Fran, anything else from you? Have you learnt anything new today that Steve has been running through? We have been adapting our process as we learn more and more and making various little tweaks and improvements. But yeah, how does it look from your perspective?
No, it's all looking good. And to be fair, when I first started, because I've been using Decisions quite a while now and it's, yeah, it's adapting the whole time, it's brilliant. And, and also it's quite nice to see things that I've suggested actually, so that they're there, cool.
Yeah, no, absolutely, no, brilliant. And thank you ever so much for joining us today and, and fellow suggestions. So brilliant, well, thanks ever so much. We'll send out a recording of the session after this meeting. And also if anyone has any, any, any questions that it asks Steve or the team, please do reach out. We'd love to have a chat and we'll send you some more information about the office as well. But thank you very much for joining us, really appreciate it. Enjoy the rest of your days and catch up soon. So bye-bye.